This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted both remotely and in person, consistent with the temporary provision of the Open Meeting Law, which extends remote meeting protocols through March 31, 2025. This meeting is convened via Zoom video conference and in-person, as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the Town of Grafton website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. All participation within this meeting will be visible to others accordingly. Be aware that anything you share on your screen will be recorded in the broadcast and may be viewed later. This meeting may feature public comment for anyone attending virtually. Use the raise hand feature in Zoom. And anyone on the phone, the meeting administrator will enable you to speak. Anyone in person, please step to the podium. And all speakers state your name and address prior to your comments or questions. And each vote taken this evening will be done on a roll call vote. So it's time I'll hand things over to Vice Chair Bill McCusker.
Thank you. So I think the first order of business we'll take is, I guess it doesn't matter now, but let's just go with Elmrock. Said I'd do that first. So this is a public hearing that we need to have. So we'll start with reading of the legal notice.
The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from Will Rock LLC, Elmrock Estates, for the development known as Elmrock Estates, requesting that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant a determination of completeness of the subdivision known as Elmrock Estates to consider granting determination of completeness on the subdivision known as Elmrock Estates for the comprehensive permit that was issued on October 27, 2017, amended on January 18, 2019, and amended again on February 28, 2019. The Board will conduct a public hearing on December 7, 2023 at 7:00 PM via Zoom conference and in-person in Conference Room A at the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center. This is to consider request and/or take whatever action is necessary, including the granting of a finding, special permit, variance, or other necessary relief allowed under the zoning bylaw. Copies of this application and plan are available for the public inspection on the Town of Grafton website and on the Zoning Board of Appeals 40B page. The December 7, 2023 meeting will be accessed via either the following means, Zoom or dial by location by phone. Zoning Board of Appeals, Brian Waller, Chairman, William McCusker, Vice Chairman, Kay Reed, Clerk, William Yeomans, Peter Adams, Jiffy Thomas, Alternate, and Metalli, Justice Wallace.
Thank you. It's stated here that this was advertised in the Grafton News on November 23 and November 30. And the Butters were all noticed as well, correct?
Correct.
All right, so maybe I'll just ask if the applicant wants to say something here. Not exactly. We don't do a lot of these. As a matter of fact, the last one we did was a mess. But that's mostly because of so many other things going on at that. So I'm not exactly sure of the process, but I don't know.
I'll take a stab at it accordingly.
If you don't have anything that you really want to say, then what else?
Well, yeah, I guess we've come down to, you know, well, we actually started about a year ago or so, but we kind of delayed it. And we just finalized a lot of the letters that were necessary in the comprehensive permit, identifying certain things that they were met and sign off by Fire Department, Police Department, DPW, of course. Fiona had some additional things that weren't in there, but we obviously made sure that they went down regardless. And I think that's why we're here tonight, for, you know, to close out that. And we've been taking care of the neighborhood for a few years now. The final pavement's been out there for a couple of years. And it's a great neighborhood, and I think the construction went great. And working with the town, everything went fantastic. So we're actually looking forward to the, you know, the next communities we're doing here with the apartments. And want to close everything out with that. And hopefully go to the town in, what is it, May, maybe perhaps, for the road acceptance there. So then it finally becomes a road for the, in town.
Yep, so you're stuck maintaining it through the winter.
That's correct.
No way getting around that.
That's correct.
The goal is to get in front of May Town Meeting.
That's absolutely correct.
Yep, okay.
And I'll check with Fiona on Monday. You know, once the vote and everything goes through tonight. When you have to have everything to them to get on the warrant.
Sure, yeah.
So my game plan had been to collect information in public hearing, see if anyone in the public wanted to say anything, and then have Fiona and Dan and also Bob Berger review this. Now, as it turns out, Fiona already did the review. And that's actually pretty helpful as far as just kind of going through what's been provided and what really is still outstanding. I still want Dan to look at it, and he has not done that. So I don't anticipate a vote this evening. I think that I can see us continuing it, get Dan's input, and then closing in and go for a vote at our next meeting. But I don't think that really has too much of an impact on you because nothing's really going to happen until spring Town Meeting anyways.
No, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. So if folks want to just turn their attention to Fiona's or Town Planner's memo of November 7, in it, she basically has gone through the whole list of documents, requirements, et cetera. And just about everything is there. I spent some time looking at this, and I think just about everything is completed. I guess one of the things that was vague in her, under staff analysis on Page 2, she references proof newspaper publishing, et cetera. But that hasn't happened back in November. That has happened, so that really is resolved. I have a question mark on number 2, talking about the surety. "We note the provided letter does not include certification by the applicant that the said construction installation connection with surety has been secured." I guess I'm not sure what she's really going to say there.
So she, Chad sent us a letter, which came in after I gave you guys that, which is this letter. Fiona got a copy of it, and she said it's fine.
Oh, right.
And she said it's fine. Yeah, that came in.
All right, that answers that question.
Monday, Monday, Tuesday.
All right, now we get, all right, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I understand. I think I read that first, and I wasn't sure what that was about.
Really, it stemmed from really Graves saying it was done and DPW done, but I signed it regardless.
Yeah.
Yep, got it.
Just another later.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, then on Page 3 of her letter, she references, I think, yeah, she references some comments from Graves on October 26. And these things have been satisfied at this point in time. I think we see that later on in the letter from Turning Point, which essentially came out the day before roughly at the same time. So there's two things that are referenced in the Graves letter. So under C, in the bowl, not October 26, review of the as-built and construction, and then a little bit later, construction completeness review. Those two things have been addressed at this point, even though they weren't at that point in time in the letter. And then going to Page 4. All right, the one thing, and I think this is the one thing that seems to be outstanding. On Page 4, it looks like 4E. That's kind of weird. It goes 1, 2, 3, 4, and then it goes to E, F, G. Talking about the as-built plan, completed streets are drawn, blah, 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 blah. It says in italics, "All comments appear to be satisfied. We note comment number 4 regarding an easement for water service lots 22. Water service routing for Lot 22 is noted on Lot 21." So where do we stand with that? I saw that reference in Graves' letter.
Yeah, that's been completed.
Do we have any?
Recorded. And that got sent to Fiona, I think, the day before the other.
The other thing, so probably Monday, yeah. And she said she was fine with it. It was in the same email she sent me with this letter, that she was fine because they said that it got recorded.
Essentially, a plan was put together showing an easement with the water line crossing one lot to service another. That's been recorded at the registry of deeds. And that's the document that was sent.
Which I think I forgot to print, but.
Do we have it?
Fiona. You sent that over, right, Clay?
Yeah.
Recorded easement. That's the construction completeness certificate.
Probably take five minutes to look it up online as well.
I can pull it up on the deeds.
Well, yeah.
Nope, I got it.
I just want to make sure that we have it in our.
I just forgot to print it.
Pile of stuff.
Yep, I have it. I can print it.
Okay.
And put it with everything. Actually, I'll print it right now, so I have it when I go in there tonight. Do you want me to pull up so you guys can see it? Okay.
As long as we have it.
Yep.
Okay, so that's resolved. All right, and then Item 4. It's a really funky numbering system going on here. Oh, no, it's the staff conclusions. So under staff conclusions, last page, Number 4, talks about a trailhead sign from the Grafton Land Trust. Any update on that?
When I spoke with Fiona, she didn't seem to think that that was really a deal breaker. In her comprehensive permit, it says the land trust may install a sign, so.
Yeah, we can't control when they want to install themselves. They've been great to work with regardless.
Just a second, Karen, so where, I went and looked briefly. Where is this trailhead sign supposed to go? Or where is this easement or trail?
Quite honestly, it's been two years. I don't know.
Did it get moved? If it didn't get moved, it didn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
It just made a way into the woods.
Was it there prior to the development?
No, there's no trail there. It just gives away if somebody ever wanted to make a trail into the woods.
Oh.
Well, okay, wait a minute. So we've got this, this big hunk of land that was donated to the land trust. Is there any way for anyone to get to this piece of land?
Yeah. They can go in.
I mean, it looks like a house, a house, a house.
No, up here, up in one of these lots, there's an easement to get into the woods that the land trust owns. The land trust owns all this and this.
Got it, all right. I was looking for something back here.
No, no.
No, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it's definitely not a trail.
Got it, right, no, all right, that makes sense. So somewhere.
As I remember, at the time, the Board wanted access to land trust land, and we provided it.
Yep.
And they may not put a sign up until there's an actual trail.
Very possible.
Because if you put a sign, someone's going to think there's a trail.
Yes, that's correct.
So maybe they haven't decided if they're actually going to do a trail.
No, that makes sense. There's really nothing there.
Yeah.
And it's not like that's the only way. See, my concern, my concern was that that piece of land that was part of this, it's in the back, that there's no way to get to it. But there's plenty of ways to get to it because its border is Grafton Land Trust land. So that's fine. I don't care. I'm good with it. But, I mean, that land goes down, goes down to the river. So, I mean, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can, there's other access to it.
And to get to that, that field, they can walk from the river, you know, where they park at the bottom of Wheeler, that trail. Then there's trails that come up.
Right, yeah, so there's plenty of access to that.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you gotta, you gotta do a hike, but.
Yeah, it's not like it's, it's not, I was just concerned that the land at the end of the cul-de-sac was landlocked in some ways, and it's not.
No. If I'm putting on my thinking cap, I want to say the Grafton Land Trust actually had the sign well in advance, but I don't think I built the stuff down there. So I think they were going to wait, and maybe they just forgot, you know, in the last year.
I'm not going to worry about it. There's ways to get there. That's their problem. So that gets, so everything in Fiona's review seems like we're good. If we, you know, if the other thing we might sometimes look at is Jeff Walsh's letter. Where did that go?
There's two or three of them in there.
That's on October 26th. Don't we have one more recent than October 26th?
There's a November 14th one.
And Bill, all the comments I just made were on the plans that I had. So I don't know how many, if they've changed in between.
You make a good point.
There's October 26th on the as-built plans, and then there's a November 14th
Yeah, okay, all right, all right. All right, so, yeah, so the October 26th letter from Graves, that's the most recent one on the plans. The only outstanding issues there are his Number 4 and Number 5. That was discussed in Fiona's letter. We already talked about, and it's already been addressed, so those are resolved. Then, are you saying the February 1st one is in the completeness review? Is the other letter from Graves?
November 14th, construction completeness review. You guys should have it in there. Hold on. If not, I have a copy of it here. It's actually.
I think it's at the very end.
It's at the very back, behind the letter from.
It's after the pictures.
After the pictures is that one.
Yeah, and there was nothing outstanding there.
Nope.
All right, so everything's been resolved. So as far as I can tell, looking at the documents submitted, everything has been resolved. We should be good to go. I just would like to have Dan as our special counsel go through and make sure we're, everything's the way it should be. And I'd also like, I just would like something from our zoning enforcement officer. I suspect he's deferred it to Fiona, which is prerogative, but I would just like to know that for sure from him.
Okay.
Anyone else have any comments or questions or thoughts?
Do you need hard copies? Do you have everything I emailed you? Okay, do you want to copy that easement?
Is it not?
No, because I forgot to attach it, but I will email it to you. Okay.
Anyone have anything?
Yeah, Bill, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do any of the owners in that development think they have a trail going through one of those lots to, you know? What is brought to mind is our episode a few years back at High Point Estates, Bill. Have any of those lots been sold with the thought that those people are going to have access from that cul-de-sac in any way?
Well, no, not the cul-de-sac, but I, I think somewhere in that development, there is a lot, or maybe it's two, they did it like High Point, that has, I assume, an easement for access to this trail network. You know, unless, unless it's actually a piece of land, I figured it's an easement.
I believe it's the second drainage easement closest to the cul-de-sac that provided access to property owned by the land trust in the event that a trail was brought up to provide access to Elmrock.
Looks like Lot 12.
Sounds all right.
Yeah, okay, Lot 11, Lot 12, here's, that's the easement. I don't necessarily see words to say "trail access," just says drainage easement.
Says access.
Oh, drainage and access easement.
Yeah.
There you go. So, so, yeah, Bill, there's at least one lot, it looks like it is, actually it looks like it's Lot 11, that has a drainage and access easement on it.
Actually, go to the, go to the next page.
It could be between both 11 and 12.
Did we have a condition in the premise?
This also.
Is that the access to the detention basins?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. That looks like, that looks like even more so. Okay. All right. Then, and there's no other input from anyone. I do want to get input from Dan and Bob, so I think what I want to do is continue this public hearing to our next meeting. And I don't know that we have a sense right now for when our next meeting's going to be.
January 11.
Oh.
You guys debated it last week because we have 348s. Two modifications and a new one.
I suppose we can add this to that.
Yeah.
This should, this should be very simple. All right, so an interesting motion to continue, this isn't a case number, is it?
Yes, it is, 827.
Continue case number 827 to January 11? Is that what you just said?
Yep.
At 7:00 PM?
Second.
She made second in discussion. So we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Adams had expressed that he was not going to vote on this.
Just one more item to be discussed at the next meeting is there's still substantial bonds in the development in place. So if we kill them at that meeting, no problems. Substantial money that's held out there, obviously.
Yeah.
Just so that's on the agenda as well.
Yep, no, I agree. Yep.
Did you ask for that in the, is that a request in the, a question for determination?
I know, one of his, one of his letters mentioned it.
Yes, yeah, there was definitely a letter that mentioned.
There's a letter that mentions it. It's not in the public notice, but there is a letter in here that does mention it.
Yeah, it's in the Turning Point. It's in November 14, Turning Point.
Probably two of them. There was one on 2021 and one on 2022.
Yeah.
For 23 or whatever it was.
Yeah, it's in here. They did request it. Yep, it's in the last paragraph. And it proves is.
357, this marks price of $34,000, construction-related items at $323,000, which is a 20%. Construction-related items listed on the basis of completed. Therefore, we request for final inspection, termination, completeness, everybody requested. What, when do you get the 20% back? Is that now?
Should be at the time of.
This completion?
Completion, technically.
Yeah, I'll make a note, just to double check with the process. I think you're right. I think there's language.
I'll double check with Fiona.
Yeah, I think there's language about, you know, getting through a season of, for the roads and all that, but you're way beyond all that.
Yeah, we're way beyond that.
Or is it acceptance by the town?
That's what I want to double check on.
You know, by the voters.
Yeah, yep, I agree.
I'm going to check with Fiona. She's out tomorrow, so, and I'm out tomorrow, but I'll check with her Monday.
I think the $34,000 is, that's easy if, you know, on construction stuff. I guess technically we probably need Graves to update their letter on that.
I think, well, I would imagine that it closes out. We have a state, site stabilization bond in place. So I already have documentation on the sites done. Then we have stuff for utilities, obviously. So I have a clean letter by Graves stating what's left and what's not left. Obviously, there's nothing left. So that was, I could see holding a bond, perhaps, if I skip out of town and I don't snowplow the place.
That's, well, I think that's, I think that's getting.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think, well, I think that's getting to what Peter said is, is it, this 323 gets released when the roads are accepted or not. I think we just need to.
I'm happy to go to the next meeting and.
I'll find out, I'll talk to Fiona on Monday.
And do it out.
And then I'm sure we have a letter from Graves that basically says there's $34,000 of construction-related items left.
Yes.
I think we just need to get that updated so it says zero.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
It should be easy enough to do.
What easement was recorded?
It was the water easement going across.
Yeah, the, the water main, actually, Dan, and this crazy cul-de-sac down there, actually, they curtailed it and cut through a piece of property, which, by mistake. So we needed to get an easement from the property owner to extend the water line. It was a goofy lot line, more or less. So they did it, and then they installed it, and they didn't know what went kind of through this other person's lot, which we had to get an easement for, which we just did.
Or 22 Elmrock.
Yeah.
And have you given us easement language for the roads and the drainage and all these other things?
That, no, no, Travis could do. Steve, I think, was done.
It's the plan. We can give a document to outlining meets and bounds of the easement. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, we're going to need a formal easement document.
Dan, Mike.
Sure.
Otherwise, Bill texts me. He can't hear us.
Okay. What's, I assume the chat is probably giving a number to Metalli? Or is that somebody asking us something?
Yeah, that was me giving Metalli the phone number.
Excellent, okay. All right, did, did we get a motion?
Yes, you made a motion.
No.
Or Brian, Brian made the motion, Kay seconded it. We were going to do a roll call vote. You said Peter was abstaining.
Peter's going to abstain, so we'll go ahead and we'll appoint Metalli to vote. And so we'll call vote. We'll start on, on remote, folks. Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Ms. Beazwoss? We didn't hear you.
Yes.
Excellent, we heard you. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Chairman, or Vice Chairman, Boches. All right, so we'll put that on hold till January 11. So this all goes together. So then the next order of business, and this is still an open public hearing, right? We haven't closed this hearing.
Nope, we have not.
So the next order of business is case number 890.
Eight.
Oh, yeah. You had, you had 898 for both Elmrock and.
Oh.
Okay, that's fine. All right, case number 898, which is the Reserve at Misko Hills 40B. Here. All right, where do we stand? What's, what's new?
I could probably give the quick and dirty again. Just for the record, I'm Chad Boardman here with Clay with Upton Street. And the last meeting, we actually had a site visit with Chair Brian and a couple of the members, and we did a tour of the site, of course, out in the field. And we had some things staked, and we actually had some drone image overlays that we did at the same time, and kind of toured the property, kind of showed everybody around. And it was rather thick in some spots, but actually it was a lot better at this time of the year with the fall, some of the stuff falling down. So we got to tour some, close to the neighbor's house. The only neighbor really there, for the most part. We looked at the driveway. We looked at where the buildings were. We looked at where her driveway was going to shift over, you know, about 15 feet. We looked at telephone poles out there. We looked at the lights, of course, to see whether we would keep the existing national grid light at the Butters entrance, which seemed to make some sense. Then we did a tour of the wetlands also down, down low, and kind of looked around. Also, I think towards the end of the tour, kind of took some, took some of the people out towards 140, and kind of showed where would be cutting some of the vegetation for sightline distances. So we had a little bit better of a feeling of kind of where we are and what was going to be done, of course. You know, not looking at a plan, but actually out in the field, which I think was beneficial, of course. Yeah, I thought that was really useful. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome. Also, tonight, I think just, I think we also, we actually do have a drone, actually, that we do use for engineering purposes. And we did overlay the site with a drone image. I think that was probably submitted with some of you guys as, as well, so. It's a little bit clearer image rather than a Google kind of Earth image, but it's kind of a useful tool that we do have.
If I can share my screen, Katrina, I can pull it up for the Zoom, too.
Yep, hold on. Go ahead. You should be able to share now. Is it letting you?
Yep. Yep. So even though it's a drone footage, it's still a little hard to make out, but, uh, actually, when we were out in the field, it was a lot easier because then we could identify where the chicken coop was and where the abandoned trailer was out in the boonies. You know, where stone walls are and things like that, but, uh, it, uh, I think it was a worthwhile exercise, of course.
Yep. This picture, I, I find this picture really helpful, especially in the, on the driveway. Um, what, what, what you're planning to do for the driveway?
Also, one of the things that was discussed, which was, was quite good, because we eliminated the garage that was over her area. And what that will allow is within some of that area of her garage, we can do some miscellaneous landscaping of some, you know, some larger trees and things of caliper, uh, towards her property line, which will help out as well. Instead of a garage being there, we can do some more, you know, landscaping and things like that in that area. So it, uh, it's actually probably a good thing.
Okay.
We also identified some larger growth, um, you know, the famous, uh, whether we're in the land clearing or not areas, but we've identified some trees that will stay, that will have a great buffer with the neighbor as well, so.
Okay.
Um, other than, other than this overlay, if there's any other questions, we, we did submit a few other things just to bring every, everybody up to date. I think we have a, a clean letter from the fire department, I believe, that was sent.
Mm-huh.
So that closes out that. Um, we have an up-to-date sewer pump station kind of memo from Paul, and, uh, Paul and I discussed it as well, so, um, he stipulated some of the conditions and I agreed with a lot of the conditions as well. And, uh, we also, he had a, uh, if anything were to differ, yeah, I'd have to get Paul's approval, so, and that was, I'd do that anyway, so we added that in the document as well, or he did, actually.
Yep.
Um, so that kind of closes out that. Other than the famous whoever it is, CDM, waiting for the sewer study kind of connection of saying, I don't think there's going to be any problems, but it hasn't come in as of yet from Paul this afternoon, so I'm sure it's coming, but I don't foresee any issues. Or certainly, it could be a condition of approval.
Yeah, so I, I suppose that has to be a condition.
Yeah.
If we don't get it.
Do they, do they waive the thirty thousand, it says in here, for the pump station?
Uh, yeah, that was part, well, that was, yeah, that was, uh.
I mean, this is private, so.
Yeah, the.
I mean, it says they charge thirty thousand for three years worth of maintenance and.
Yeah, no, it's, that's, that would, that wouldn't be in there, but, um, I think he specifically called out certain ones that would be relate to, that we would be, you know, put in our conditions. That first page was like a boilerplate. I kind of said, well, you can put it in there, the thirty thousand doesn't really matter, but I, I think if it's, the conditions themselves are pointed out, I think, uh, with you guys, I think that satisfies Paul's memo.
I didn't read Paul's memo as addressing that one way or the other. Uh, he was, he was talking about specific conditions, the pump station standards.
I mean, if they don't do what the town, what sewer department wants them to do, they can't play the game. It, it's just that simple. So, I mean, I don't even know if we need any of this. They just won't allow them to pump.
But, but they're a local board under forty B, so we, we have to make sure that whatever Paul wants, we have to put into our permit, so.
Alright.
That's out, that's outlined in the memo, so if you could give Dan the memo, that would be, it clears.
He's got it.
Oh, it clears it up, yeah.
It's, it's.
I mean, if they.
It's not clear, so we're going to have to get clarification.
If the sewer department changes the rules in the middle of the game, you have to abide by the new rule.
Well, it's the same thing. I'm, I'm, I'm dealing with a private pump station, but he's dictating what pumps I'm using, so it's a little awkward. It's a little, you've got a town that usually like to use the same pumps to fix their stations, which I agree with, but maybe there's other manufacturers with pump stations, so, but I'm okay with doing flight or similar. So he specifically took out his regs and identified what regs were pertaining to this project, so I, I can't speak to any more of that. It's not sufficient because I believe it is sufficient to him with a memo, um, but if you want clarification, ask Mr. Canoyer again.
So he's saying it's specific manufacturer of.
What he's saying is like the specific regs, you know, numbers one, six.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of regs in there that don't apply, that are more for if we were installing something that would be a public, you know, where this is private. He said, look, I'm not going to hold you any of those regs, the thirty thousand, the specific pump manufacturer, so here are the rigs, I want to make sure you guys are upheld to. That was our conversation with him.
That, that includes the, the type of pump, right?
Yeah.
Well, whatever the, you know, whatever regs he, he.
Um, I wasn't too worried about it, because if I want, if the pump station engineer just wanted to go with a different pump manufacturer, I could submit that to Paul and he would say, yeah, I know, okay, it's a private, we, we're not going to fix it, so we're not going to have a flight pump on, you know, on hand, obviously. So I'd, I'd deal with that after the fact with a DPW, but I thought it was sufficient enough for conditions of approval.
The one thing about it, if you had the same pumps as the town did and yours went down for some reason on a Sunday.
Yeah.
You might be able to borrow one from the town.
Don't, I, I don't think they work that way, unfortunately.
Well, a lot of, a lot of water districts do that.
Yeah.
If somebody's stuck, they'll let them just replace it, you know?
Yeah, yeah, sometimes it's the impeller setup is the, the, changes the flows of the pumps as well and so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think if, at this point, we assume that we, the board has what we need. I mean, as Dan crafts a decision, he'll take the time to review exactly what's written here, and if you need more, we, we communicate.
Yeah, I think there's going to be some need to clarify some things with Paul, because e- even some of the numbers that he flagged, some of them still apply to public ownership, like number thirty nine. So I, I, I think we just need to go, I think maybe, maybe I can meet with Paul or talk to him and go through this memo.
Yeah.
Um, the, the pump station policy, I think, really applies to, to public pump stations, but again, if there's something in here that he wants to apply to this project, he can, um, I, I just wanted to make sure the board is aware, though, too, Mr. Chairman, that, um, this, it is, it is a little tricky when we have these private pump stations and force mains installed in public ways, um, because once a sewer goes into a public way, anybody who has frontage on that sewer has the right to connect to it. And, um, you can physically connect to a force main, from what I understand, but there may be some engineering issues with respective flows and, you know, for example, if, if a forty B project went in next door to this project on old Upton Street, um, that, that owner, that developer would presumably want to connect to the force main that's being put in, um, but those additional flows may cause problems because the pump station itself, which is private, was designed to pump, you know, the, the, the number of units for, for this project, not twice that number. So, and, so that, this raises some issues, which I think I need to think through. Uh, maybe there's some creative conditions that we can put in the decision to address those kind of contingencies. Um, but it's not, this would be a lot simpler if this was a gravity sewer, but because it's a forced main, it's, creates a couple of issues that we have to deal with.
But wouldn't, and I, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just curious, wouldn't that be the responsibility of the next developer to tie into whatever's there?
So the, the main that's going to be an old Upton Street is going to be a town-owned main, right? I mean, I'm assuming that that's the plan. You're going to, they're going to convey the util, they're going to install the utility in the road and then convey that utility to, to the town of Grafton, retaining ownership of the, of the pump station. So once you have a pri, once you have a public main in a road, all the butters have the right to connect to it.
I don't think it wants any part of the private, the force main pipe in the road. I don't, I don't believe so. Paul does, I, I don't believe so. I mean, we've, we've had, we've had private force mains on the roads in Milford, believe it or not.
Have you ever had anybody else tie another main into?
There was redundant, redundant lines. There was two force mains, I believe.
Yeah, how, how can you have a private main in a public way? That doesn't make sense.
Well, I, who maintains a force main?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Does the, the, in this case, would it be you or would it be the town?
It would be us, technically.
Let me say you had a, a break in the middle of it.
Because we would have to go all the way up to the, uh, force main itself for the outlet and the manhole. Uh, I don't think there's any blow-off valves or, it hasn't been designed to that point where there's, you know, there's, I think the, what is it, the, uh?
Air release.
Yeah, air release valve or something, might be halfway up, maybe, the street, perhaps?
That, that doesn't, it's, it doesn't fly under, under municipal law. You can't, this board can't grant you a license or an easement in, in north Upton, or in old Upton Street. So it's going to have to be a town pipe, and we, we've done this before. It, it happens all the time. Developers install utilities in public ways and they, they transfer those utilities by deed to the, to the town. And that can happen here. It's just that the issue is if someone else wants to connect to it, um, and, and whether the pump station is going to be adequate to, to handle those additional flows that could put into the pipe.
Well, but, but if, if, if it was a gravity system, you could have the same problems, right? Somebody wants to put a big development and the, and the pipe's not big enough.
Sure.
So then that person, that developer needs to replace the pipe to a point.
Yep.
So it, you know, it seems to me that wouldn't that be similar, that, right, if you want to tie into that force main, then you need to make it bigger and, then I don't know, make, make the pump bigger, that his, make his pump bigger, I don't know.
But that's a problem, it's on his property, his private property, so, I, again, I don't, I don't know the answer tonight, but.
I think it's a conversation.
I don't know.
Yeah, no.
What do you mean, you don't know?
No, I agree.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah, I agree with Dan with the private saying, because we were in Milford and I'm like, how can it be pri, you know, how can it be private? And he's like, well, that's yours. I'm like, oh, okay.
It was a long run.
Yeah, it was a mile.
That's a, that's a Paul Canoyer question.
Yeah, I, I think it's a conversation with Paul Canoyer, and, and so I think Dan's going to do that. Bill Yeomans, you have your hand up.
Yes, uh, you know, I read, uh, Paul's multi-page letter, and after reading that and hearing the discussion to, tonight, I think it's very important to be clearly spelled out, uh, in that letter, because we don't want to get into a situation in the future where, uh, there's a problem and it's a finger pointing, well, that is the developer and that is the sewer department. And the letter also was very specific relative to having spare parts per, for pumps that they're familiar with, so I think Dan's earlier point, I, I think it's very, very important to, of, to have a document that stands the test of challenge as we write this decision, and that's what, uh, Dan Hill has talked about, because if you read through the multi-page, you know, document, uh, there's a lot of things in there that are very, very specific. Thank you.
Yeah, alright, so you're, you're going to be, we.
Yeah, let me ask a question, just the applicant. So would, would you be comfortable with a condition that, um, gives the town an option to take over the pump station in the future? No obligation for the town to do it, but.
I don't have a problem with that.
That might be a solution that.
Yeah, I was going to say one more thing. The, the pump, with a pump station, I believe, it's, it's, if anybody would, wanted to tie in, I mean, that'd have to go down to street gravity again, so you'd, now, say if somebody was halfway, that'd have to go out in the street, would put new sewer manholes going down into our pump station, uh, then it would pump all the way up. There is a way, I believe, that is called, is it a telemetry or something like that, where I think individual pump people online can tie into that main, but it, it's a timing system and some type of valve to work, but I, that's like a.
Pressure system.
Yeah, it's like a, a read, a redo of the main line out there, and I, I.
Well, I, I thought, go back early on, I thought Steve was actually under the impression in, in that people would be able to tie into that force main.
Yeah, I think it's time.
And it was kind of new to him that Grafton didn't allow that.
Yeah, and I think.
Down in Grafton doesn't allow it.
Yeah.
Not allow stubs in the force mains.
I, I, maybe some clarity with Paul, um, you know, with Dan, and even me, we can kind of, obviously, we're going to another extension here, so let's, I'll suss this out.
No, exactly. So, so, um, yeah, Dan will meet with, with Paul, there's issues, I think, you know, everyone, you know, talks and, and just kind of works through it. I, I don't, you know, I think, in conception, I think we're all on the same page. I think we just want to make sure we, you know, do it correctly as far as the language goes.
Yeah, even the condition, like you say, and maybe there's a large development up the road that could eventually put gravity into that pump station down there, would enter, you know, maybe, maybe it's, it's a bigger pump station, you know? So I'm, I'm not opposed to a condition like that, you know?
Okay.
Of course, why would anybody want to keep a pump station if they could get rid of?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Just costing me money. That's why, that's why Paul doesn't want them.
So, um, Peter, do you remember the, the pump station and, up on Creeper Hill for Flint Pond?
Yeah.
Is that?
That's private.
That's private?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Because nobody else could tie into it.
Oh, I, I remember that part at all.
Yeah, no, that's private.
Right. But, but ultimately, I thought, actually, the, we, we resolved it by, a couple of houses actually do flow down to it, don't they?
No, they never, they never did. We thought he, he was going to allow that, and as far as I know, they never, they never could. I was very disappointed in that.
I, oh, I, I thought.
In all our discussions, it sounded like he was going to allow that, and, uh.
All right, I thought we had resolved it for them, like one or two houses.
No, I don't, I don't.
Were actually going to be allowed to flow down.
All the ones that were downhill from the crest of the hill, no, never happened.
Hmm.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, see, that's the issue we're talking about here.
And, and it's same thing. Who, like on Creeper Hill, who owns that force main that comes out onto town, on the town road?
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it is, it's, it's exactly the same situation. Those people have been told no. I, I thought, I spoke with Dan earlier about this, I thought that we had, you know, with some sort of resolution such that some of those people were able to gravity down to, um, essentially Satira Station, but, um, if, if the answer's no, then no, then that's exactly the situation. You know, people live along that force main who can't tie into it. Yeah, I mean, didn't you have that, didn't your brother have that on, on Millbury Street?
Yeah, he's got a, he, he has from basically the middle of the school, the farm.
Yeah.
Is where it starts gravity going towards Grafton.
Yeah.
From there to the pump station is all force main, but the developer at the time gave a two-inch plastic pipe to each lot.
Oh.
And if they ever wanted to have their own mini-pump station, it does go to a, a manhole at one end or the other.
Oh, but not into the force main?
Those two house, there's two houses on the hill.
Yeah.
The brand-new house, they're five years old now, they go up to the manhole in front of the farm.
So they pump? They're way up there, but they have to pump.
And they're going up the, 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 the green space that the town owns. And I can't imagine if that two-inch line plugged, that the town would unplug it. I, I, I think they own it myself, but, I mean, that's a good question for-
I guess we're gonna learn something, so it would be-
Yeah, we do.
Alright, yeah, if there's nothing else on, uh, on the pump station or sewer, then let's move on.
I'll, I'll, I'm more than happy kind of, you know, work it out with Paul in more detail as well.
Okay.
So we're waiting for a sewer capacity analysis.
That's correct, yeah.
Is that the CDM?
Yeah, CDM.
CDM maybe, I think it was.
Yeah, CDM.
They're, they're the town's wastewater.
Yeah, they thought they'd have it this week. It was what we had originally heard and then Paul just hadn't seen anything as of today.
Alright, so we're close on that. So hopefully we'll have that by decision time. Alright.
Bill, can I ask a question about the, uh,
Yep.
Fire Department? In my notes from the last meeting, we talked about getting a sweat path analysis on the site plan. Do you guys have that or was that already done?
That was done from the traffic engineer previously.
It's in the traffic report?
Yes, it's part of the traffic plans. I think it was separate from the report, but they did submit plans.
Yeah.
Okay.
GPI. And those were, were reviewed by tech, from my understanding.
Yeah.
And was that the part, the, the ladder truck?
Yep.
Do you have that handy? Can you-
Hold on, I have a copy I can give you.
Because I didn't see that. Was it attached to the traffic report?
Uh, I believe it was a standalone set of plans, four sheets.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And did you guys address the accessibility issues that Jeff Walsh raised?
That was a hand- handicapped.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're reconforming the handicaps and there'll be some switchbacks in the development, yeah.
Is that going to be a revised plan?
That'll be on the final-
So we'll put it on the revised plan, yep, in more detail. Jeff had put together a sketch and I did as well and shared that with Jeff and they were pretty similar, so as Chad said, they agreed to do it, so we're gonna add it to the final plan.
Okay, is that a plan that we're gonna see before we close the hearing or, or after?
Uh, I can get you a plan, um, just in general showing where those areas would be, uh, in great detail, but we can add those to the final plan.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, a question along that same, um, line of accessibility. Regarding the, the variance, I think I have an understanding that the, uh, details that Jeff has proposed and that you're discussing have to be done before you could apply to the Architectural Access Board for the variances that you think you may need within the project itself. Is that true?
There's no need to petition the state for a variance, uh, if we're conforming to ADA ramps in accessibility throughout the site, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, okay. No, that was because I know we've, we've mentioned a variance, but what, what you're going to do will eliminate the need for a variance from AAB.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I believe we were thinking to get the variance from the sidewalks over a certain percentage slope and we're, we're not, we're not doing that. That's why we're gonna do the switchback, um, uh, walkways and things. That's, that's correct.
Good, thank you.
Um, Katrina, could you put, I just sent you a document. Can you put that on the screen? So I did, I took, I took the site distances that you guys had in your traffic report and plotted them out on, on a, uh, what is this, uh, Mass GIS? And the site distances that, that GPI said were available actually cross over, um, I mean, it's within the town right away or the state right away. Is that a state highway?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um, I think what I would recommend is a condition that would require the applicant to then clear the vegetation with those sight lines and to put those sight lines actually on, on the plan or on a separate plan sheet or something. So we know where the site triangles are at this intersection. So I'm assuming that's not a big deal for you guys to clear that vegetation and then maybe have a, a condition that they maintain it, maintain it cleared.
I believe that was a recommendation from tech as well.
Yeah.
And, and the second page, Katrina's the one that goes, uh, the other way. Yeah. So you, you just basically clip the, the shoulder.
Yep.
Um, So, so tho- tho- those purple lines are the right away lines?
That's what GIS thinks is the legal boundaries of the lots.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily accurate, but-
Yeah, okay.
Dumpsters, that was on my list as well. Were you looking at relocating the dumpster that was closest to the butter?
So the, at the last meeting, we discussed moving this dumpster because I think there was some issue with accessibility and having to back out
Yep.
to this location here.
Did, did you move it?
We have not yet. We have not prepared any revised plans, so that was, uh, discussed at the last meeting. Graves seemed to think we had all that stuff addressed, so we would do that on the final set.
Can you put the other plan up? Because it's hard to tell where that is in relation to the buildings.
So that dumpster is currently here.
Right.
We discussed coming here so that a truck could come in, back up and then leave.
So it'll still be, it would still be against the property line then?
It would be.
Okay.
From my recollection, it wasn't necessarily the location, it was the accessibility of getting that truck in and having to back out through that line.
It was backing out. That was my, that was my concern.
Right. Okay.
And plus with the garage missing over there, it allowed us to do some, you know, more landscaping in that area as well to shield the, uh, that, uh, area.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Uh, as I recall reading somewhere, didn't Jeff, are there two dumpsters?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Yeah, we added one up towards building 500, um, that would service those buildings to the rear of the site.
Okay, because that was one of his comments, I think, a while back. Thank you.
Um, okay. Did you have anything you want to add or?
I don't think so. Um,
Okay.
I don't think so. I think it's close to-
When, when was our last meeting on this one? What was the date of that?
November 9th.
Okay, so I did look at the tape, but my memory is terrible. Um, did we go through Jeff's comments? Like, there's a whole bunch of new comments from November 7th. Did we go through all those?
Yeah, Jeff was here.
Yes, you did. Because I remember-
So I assume these, all these comments on his November 7th letter are gonna be addressed, so we-
Yeah, yep.
Nothing to talk about here, well-
No substantial change. The only thing I will add, um, his new comment, I believe it's comment number 28, um, requesting more soil testing because we added an underground infiltration area.
Yeah.
Uh, we have since done that and I had sent-
And you guys got all the copies of that today?
Jeff had information to confirm that we meet.
Yep, I saw that comment, okay.
Groundwater separation.
Alright, so nothing to talk about on Jeff's letter. The, um, we have a December 4th letter from Tac, the traffic folks. I don't think there was anything new. Maybe just kind of formalize what was already been presented. So I, I don't, I don't believe there's anything to talk about with, in their latest letter.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, I have a, a comment to make on the, uh, the new test holes that were mentioned. I think a letter came out this afternoon. Excuse me. The, uh, previous meeting, Jeff had asked for new test holes to be dug or made in the area of the the retention basin that you've moved. Is that correct?
Uh, so we added an underground infiltration area that we did not have testing in, so he wanted two holes in that one and then he wanted a confirmatory hole in the previously shown underground infiltration area.
And with, with that in mind, um, is, is the plan to capture the roof runoff's throughout the project?
Into those systems?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it, just so I understand it clearly. So there will be a subsurface, a subsurface infiltration system to capture all the roof runoff's. Is that correct?
Um, a majority of the roof runoff does get into either the detention basin, the infiltration basin or that underground. There is some that is just discharged freely, um, into the level spreader that discharges towards Route 140.
And the, the reason, wha- what prompted my curiosity is I received the, uh, three-page document that you sent with the, uh, the test borings that you did just recently in November for Jeff's request for the, for the pits that I just mentioned. And the previous pits that were dug for that lot were dug back in February of 2022. What came to mind as I saw those comparisons is that, um, the same soil conditions exist here that appear to be the same soil conditions that existed on Pleasant Commons, which were very, very good for, for drainage. And, um, so I just want to ensure that based on that, that, uh, as much as we possibly can, that I want to see the, the plans that detail capturing as much of that roof runoff as possible. I had raised this question, uh, sometime in the past and when Jeff was there and I had raised the question of capturing, uh, it with the subsurface infiltration systems, uh, as much as possible. And the comment, as I recall, is that there was a lot of shale, but when I look at the test borings that you just did and also the test borings that were done on this parcel on, uh, on the other side, were, you know, significantly basically the same as the conditions that, uh, that we found and that you all find on, on Pleasant Street. So, uh, while it's not in a wellhead protection zone and obviously, uh, you know, I had a great deal of concern with that and this is not in a wellhead protection zone, but, uh, many nearby residents, um, I think have wells and, uh, the Grafton Water District at some time in the future may need a new well. And I just want to ensure that the, the maximum amount of work is done to capture the roof runoff's. And we went through this before in some, in, on Pleasant Street. And, uh, you know, I, I, I'm gonna look specifically at the plans, but, uh, there, uh, on Pleasant Street, we captured, I think, three buildings were captured with the, with the, uh, subsurface infiltration systems, you know, the big, the big container that it drains into and then that's on a, a crushed rock base and that, that dissipates out. Is the same process being used on these buildings or is it, or is it the piping, uh, which we came up between, I think, between building three and four, when I raised the question of four not having a subsurface retention or, or subsurface infiltration system like the other three buildings? And Jeff made this suggestion of laying, uh, perforated pipe on the bed. And that would let some of the, uh, some of the roof water directly down into the soil. So-
So, so the question is, so the question is, which ones are, of the buildings here?
Yeah, what, yeah, which ones?
To the applicant, can you answer that question, please?
Yes, so this building here is being recharged. This building here is being recharged. This building here is being recharged. That one is being bypassed. That is being bypassed and that is being bypassed. The difference, big difference here is, uh, Pleasant Street was mapped A soils, very, very good soils. These soils are mapped C, consistent with what we sa- found on site. Um, if you remember, Jeff had specifically spoke to the difference in soils on these two sites. Um, so that is the reason, uh, Massachusetts Stormwater Standards recognizes sites like this with mapped C soils infiltrating to the maximum extent that you can, which we've done. We've exceeded those regulations, so drastic difference in soils from Pleasant Street certainly.
But if you, if you look at your soil, your existing conditions on Pleasant Street and for the seven test holes that were dug for Pleasant Street and you look at the findings from the February of 2022, uh, test holes that were done and then with the ones that were recently done, I think three of them that were done in just this past month. When you compare those two, the soils are almost identical. So, I, you know, I, and that's why I've raised the question. There was mention of shale, so you don't have to do it because you can't, uh, you can't capture the water, but to me, the, the existing conditions for this site with the test holes that have been perforated into the site, in the building site and those from Pleasant Street are, you know, exactly the same. So I'm going to ask Bill that Jeff looks more carefully at that. And I, I don't agree with that, with that statement that's been made prior. So I, I would just ask that more attention be ti- be paid to that, uh, to the type of soil and, and, and I'm glad to see that a lot of these buildings are going to be, you know, captured with an infiltration system, but those that aren't, perhaps we can do the same additional piping between buildings that will allow more of the roof water to penetrate directly into the soil before it reaches and has to go to the detention basins that are planned on site right now. Thank you.
What, did you perk that?
We didn't perk it. There's no correlation between a perk test and infiltration for stormwater. There's no conversion, if you will.
Really? I mean, it's still gotta go down into the ground though.
Correct, but they're different, different measurements, different units, so there's real good correlation to do it. What you looked at first is the map soils on site from USGS. And that is map C, so that's your indicator. That's what Stormwater Standards would look at. Next thing is you do the soil testing on site to confirm that that is the soil. So you can't be in a map C soil and then all of a sudden use A for your infiltration. It just, it doesn't work that way.
I mean, Grafton's hills are all junk. They're, they're all clay.
And-
And that's halfway up to the, the height.
Yeah.
Or, or three quarters of the way to the-
And the soils that we found this time around were definitely better than the ones down front, but they're not Pleasant Street sand, straight sand soils. Jeff acknowledged that. I don't know if anybody recalls that at previous meetings, but he did speak to that as well.
But, but again, I ask you to look at the, look at the rankings of the soil conditions that were done in February of 2022. They're very comparable to the ones that you did in November and they're also very comparable to the ones on Pleasant Street. So I understand that different holes are dug for percolation tests for an onsite septic system. But what we're dealing with here and my concern is that I want to see as much rainwater from the roof runoff's be directly penetrating the soil beneath it, which seems to indicate that it's much more porous than the glacial, uh, till that you speak of, uh, on a lot of hills in, in Grafton. In, in my estimation, the plans that I've seen do not support that statement. And I'd just like to have that clarified, uh, with Jeff. Thank you.
Yeah, Bill, I, I think, um, so I, I think the applicant has gotten your message and I think it may be the right thing to do because Jeff's not here. Um, is maybe just ma- is write a note to Jeff of exactly what you're looking for, have him review. He, uh, you know, he still has more, you know, work to do on this project, so, you know, get his opinion as well. The applicant has stated that Jeff's already weighed in on this issue, so maybe, you know, maybe he just needs to say it again and, uh, and we can put this to rest.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the, I'm not exactly sure what you are referring to, Mr. Yomans, with respect to the soils being similar, like what aspects of that? Um, but the soils on Pleasant Street said sand, so in that C layer, which is a layer that you look at assuming top and subsoil is taken off and that's where the water's going. and that's where the water's going into the ground, was sand. These soils here are sandy loam, which means majority of that material is made up of loam with some sand mixed in. Now, oftentimes that loam is silty, does not allow water to get through like sand would. So that's the difference in the soil structures. That's all.
Yeah, we have, we have no problems with Jeff reviewing, and they already meet conditions regardless.
So that's, let's get, again, let's get the professionals to weigh in and go from there.
Thank you.
Just on the topic of traffic, I had not looked at the GPI letter that closely. GPI is their traffic engineer. And there were several issues that I think the board should be aware of. I don't know if you want to talk about them now, we can talk about them next time.
Now is as good a time as any.
So, and I know I missed a meeting, so I'm not sure if these were already brought up a few months ago. But so your traffic engineer had a fairly lengthy comment letter with thirty points. GPI addressed some of them on October twenty-seventh, and then TEC responded to some of those on December fourth. There's going to be a Mass Highway Access Permit process, so a lot of the issues with respect to 140 would be addressed through there. So one of the comments that Kevin had suggested was creating an exclusive left turn lane on Route 140 to turn into Old Upton Street. But that's not something this board can do. We can, we can just recommend or encourage the applicant to consult with Mass DOT, but ultimately, we can't force that to happen. Comment number fifteen, Kevin had recommended a series of TDM recommendations, which I think is Transportation Demand Management, I believe is the acronym. And GPI, well, let's just look at those. So, for example, sidewalks can be provided. The applicant will work with the WRTA to see if a bus stop is feasible. Does a WRTA even go down 140?
The closest stop is the Grafton Common.
Yeah, I don't know why that's in there.
They come, they come to the common?
I don't, I've never seen them up there. No, they don't go up there.
I'm impressed if they do.
Yeah, I was listening to the traffic report where the closest stop was. I think it was somewhere in that vicinity.
And then he has a comment, bicycle storage, bike racks, and EV charging stations. Then, so these are like all addressed kind of vaguely in the applicant's materials. There's no commitments to do these sort of things. GPI had said that they'll address these issues with Mass DOT, but I don't, I don't think that's actually appropriate, because these are more issues on the project site, not on Route 140. So I don't know if the board cares, we don't have to, you know, decide tonight. But, you know, if you want to put a condition there that requires a certain percentage of EV charging stations, I don't know if we talked about this for Pleasant Street or not.
I know we've talked about it more in the context, I think, of just the residents are going to demand that.
Right.
Or it's going to be a, a marketing aspect or something to that effect, that there will be demand that will, you know, balance that out or cover it.
Yeah, what a lot of towns are, what a lot of climate-conscious towns are doing nowadays in the land use decisions is actually requiring projects to have a certain percentage or a certain number of EV charging station spaces, but then also wire like the rest of the parking so that you could install them in the future.
And now that you say that, I think that is what we had talked about for Pleasant Street.
And that's also what the state building code says as well. You have to have a certain percentage that are chargers in the ground, which I believe is, I believe is ten percent, and fifteen percent of the total needs to be EV ready. So you have conduits in the ground and ready to put chargers in.
It's in the building code?
Yeah, actually, all new houses being built, you have to have it for solar and EV chargers.
It says at June first, so it just changed.
Yeah, it literally just changed.
Certain percentage have to be EV ready, a large percentage, where we have to put conduits in, have them ready to go, and then naturally, being our community, we will put EV chargers in, bike rooms, bike storage. I mean, we want our residents to, you know, you know, it's got to be like, that's the perk of, people want to live there, so we want to make sure we have all that stuff.
See more and more Teslas and Rivians on the road.
Yeah, exactly, so there's no question we won't have all that stuff, obviously.
Okay. So they did provide the turning template plans. I don't, but I don't, Kevin didn't address that in his letter, so I don't know if he, do you know if Kevin actually reviewed those?
I, no.
Okay.
I assumed he did, but I don't know.
I can follow up with Kevin, and maybe the fire chief to make sure he saw this as well, that we used the right firewood sizes.
Metalli, you have your hand up.
Can you hear me?
Again.
Okay, I just had a quick question. When something is EV ready, who is responsible if the need arises to make them like actually electric vehicle spaces? Who is responsible for kind of bringing them that step further?
We are, donors are, donors are.
Okay.
All private, we do it, we pay for it all. There's some state funding and grants and stuff.
But would we be able to, would this board be able to require it after an X number of years? Or is once it's EV ready, it's on the developer or the owner to make that decision?
As of now, it is on the owner to make that decision. But, you know, as these laws progress and, you know, all this stuff progresses with, with the energy codes and stuff, you know, it may be required down the road. That's why they want to be, the infrastructure to be in now.
Hey, guys, you guys need to close in to your mics.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I mean, I suppose, Dan, you know, we wanted to say they need to have, you know, forty EV stations built or something. We could do that, but I don't think we want to get, start heading down that pathway. I mean, we don't necessarily, the town doesn't require that for any other developments, that sort of thing. So, you know, I think we're just basically relying on the state standards. And applicant has already acknowledged that, so.
Right. Okay. And the only, the only other big thing that stuck out to me was the issue of any kind of fair, fair share contribution from the applicant for sidewalk improvements or other improvements on 140. And the response to that from GPI was that would be deferred until the MEPA or Mass DOT review process? So that, you could do that, but I don't actually remember. Was there, is there an MOU on this project like there is for Pleasant Street?
Yeah.
And is there, are you already making a financial contribution?
That's correct.
Yeah, it's the same dollar amount, twenty-five thousand per building.
Okay.
So it would be a hundred and fifty thousand total.
Yeah, plus this one has extensive off-site water, obviously being done. That was part of the master plan by Grafton Water.
Okay, so anyway, that was this comment that Kevin made.
Yeah, all right. All right, I've, at this point, I've gone through everything that was on my pile, with the exception of the waiver list. And again, I don't can remember exactly what happened at the last meeting. I think, I think you already went through waivers once, didn't, at the last meeting?
We did.
Yeah. So I, so the waivers that I have in front of me, yeah, these are waivers, December seventh, I'm not sure which ones we need to talk about. I don't have notes like I did on the other one, don't know. Is, Dan, do you know which ones have changed?
Well, they added, you guys added the multifamily housing.
Right, so through the chair, if I may.
Okay.
The main change to the waiver, we looked at two waivers on the second page, both with and without the donated land, because of the discussion, I think Brian had asked for that at the last meeting. And then, as you mentioned, in the last page of the document, I had a four discussion section comparing, you know, setbacks and dimensional controls to the multifamily district.
All right, so help me out here. You added, I guess it would be the second row or section five, two, two, one?
Right. So originally, our waiver was accounting for the total parcel, fifteen point eight acres, with a land area per dwelling unit of forty-five hundred twenty-seven square feet. And then part of the discussions at the last meeting, I also ran that scenario without the, with the donated land not being included, which lowered the, you know, amount of square footage per unit. I think based on the discussions we had at Pleasant Street about the MOU and our availability to use that land area through our zoning calculations, I guess I'll leave it up to you. If we want to keep these that way or remove that, I think that discussion happened, you know, after our last meeting here for Misco Hills.
I think the request would stand, and then our decision on it would say, you know, that we considered, whatever language we use, we considered the per dwelling based on the totals parcel.
Number one, in other words.
Yeah, okay. I get it. And then, and then what was the other thing you added?
And then the next one was two waivers down, section five, two, two, four. There shall be one thousand square feet of usable common open space per dwelling unit. And as I mentioned, we did not have this waiver previously, because when you include the open space as, you know, common open, usable common open space, we were above one thousand. So when you take that away and just account for the recreation fields, the number is substantially lower. We feel that that open space is usable. It acts as a connector to a pretty wide range of trails that are owned by the Grafton Land Trust, and I think some from the Conservation Commission. I'm a mountain biker myself, and I've ridden back there previously. And once you kind of hop over the train tracks, there's a massive network back there. So I guess from our perspective, that waiver wouldn't really be needed, because with that five and a half acres of open space, we're over a thousand square feet per dwelling unit.
Yep, understood.
And then, other than that, the last page of the document, the residential multifamily zoning waivers for discussion.
Before we leave that, if I may?
Okay, go ahead.
And I think Metalli had a question before me.
No, I put it in the chat, and Katrina shared, she shared her thing, thank you.
Okay, and the question I have is the, at the previous meetings, we've had discussions about accessing accessibility to the donated space. Is it accessible to this project?
Right, yeah, we believe it is. I think Travis from Turning Point could probably speak more directly to that issue.
Yeah, so there's an existing trail up here at the rear of the site that actually crosses the wetland into kind of our project area. That leads down here and gets onto this vacant land in the back. And then there's also a named trail, Christie's Knoll Trail, that comes towards the rear of the house here, adjacent to us. So, as Clay said, once you get kind of back in here, that opens up into additional trails. And there was going to need to be a footbridge or something. We did propose a footbridge with some dedicated trail parking here, a path that would connect to this that would allow basically access to here, and then also a loop that residents could walk to.
Right, so it's that, unless they lower one to the, to the left, that that, that's going to happen, right? That's part of it?
That's what we're proposing.
And the notice intent, that's what we want to, want to do, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think, I think that will be a very nice selling point to these apartments if it's clear that the residents have access through your parcel into, you know, a lot of walking areas. Thank you.
We agree with you.
You would go in front of conservation for the bridge?
Yeah, I was thinking some type of footbridge that would get it, you know, not touching the wetlands, maybe telephone pole, some variation to get it above ground, obviously, and be safe accordingly.
All right, so, all right, so then we were about to go to the RMF, and the last page you added. So these are new. So I do know that typically in waivers like this, we like to try to identify where that's needed. So allow a side setback of twenty-five feet, where a setback of twenty feet, is that in specific places that's needed?
So the side setback would be in these locations here, would be that first request. And I think, Clay, we had mentioned these were flipped around, is that right?
The numbers?
Yeah, your numbers.
So imagine the rear setback would be-
The rear setback providing twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are, these are backwards in the request.
So I just, I just think we typically like to identify building numbers or something like that, similar to what you've actually done on the next one.
Sure.
Were you talking about building height?
Do you need twenty for the side, Travis?
Twenty, yeah, if we want to get specific, twenty-three on the side. And that would be building four hundred, if we want to specify it.
Yep.
And then rear would be twenty-five feet to building five hundred.
And there's no setbacks for the driveways in the bylaw?
No setbacks from the driveways that I'm aware of.
Or parking?
There's not, I thought it was for the parking, no?
I think it is.
There's a, in a zoning, it's ten feet.
Something like that.
Supposed to be ten feet of green space.
Oh, is there? Yeah, we comply with. You don't need a waiver for it?
I know a waiver.
Okay, I see. A waiver for it?
No.
Okay.
We don't.
I didn't think it did.
So that is thirty, so that, that parking lot that's to the left, yeah, right there, is that?
I will have to confirm that exact dimension, but I believe it is more than thirty feet, which is why we did not ask for a waiver.
What are those? What are those things that are at the end of the parking lot, those gray boxes?
Snow storage.
These, yes, snow storage areas.
So grass?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Yeomanz, oh, I'm sorry, we still-
That dumpster's getting moved over to the left.
That dumpster, yep, that dumpster will be relocated in this location.
Okay, but there'll be a hammerhead there, is that?
Yeah, the pavement will remain, we might have to be able to pull it back just a little bit, but that'll remain so a car can back out of that last space.
Mr. Yeomanz, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Bill, help me understand on page two of five, Article thirty-six, Stormwater Management, why the waiver to allow these zoning board of appeals to have the authority to administer, implement, and enforce this bylaw. Why is it better for us to have that versus Conservation Commission?
Dan, isn't it standard on, you know, it's, yeah, I think, Bill, this is standard on all the forty Bs, we act as a COMCOM.
We act as every local.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Local stuff.
Thank, all right, thank you.
But are you asking for, you're not asking for any waivers substantively? From the Stormwater Bylaw?
Okay, so we talked about a couple of new things. What I'm feeling a little hamstrung here is I don't know if we have to- What I'm feeling a little hamstrung here is I don't know if we have to talk about anything else on the waivers or if we've already gone through them and and maybe I'm, maybe I'm asking you, Dan, if we have what we need waivers wise?
Um, I don't remember going through these. Did, did we do this at a, at prior meeting? Not, not, not November ninth, right?
When I did the minutes, you didn't go through them.
Yeah, we went through them the last meeting.
November nine.
Did you?
In November ninth?
I wasn't here, so I don't know.
That's what I'm saying.
I know I looked at them.
You were not here, we went through them.
Okay, I don't remember that, but I can look at the tape.
And that's when we were discussing the multifamily that you wanted to add back into some of the.
We're talking about that, but I didn't, I didn't, I don't remember going through each one and taking votes, but.
You sure we didn't talk about the multifamily?
No, we definitely didn't take both.
In the minutes, I have review of waivers table till next meeting and that's the November ninth minutes.
So you never did them. They were tabled.
Okay.
I wasn't here, but I did watch them.
That's good.
I think we talked about, um, item by item because that's when you guys said, you know, look, I want to compare them to this and that, but I.
You sure you're not thinking of Pleasant Street?
I'm pretty sure.
I mean, I'll watch.
We didn't take, we didn't take votes.
We're with you guys a lot.
Yeah.
A lot of them are.
I'm not too sure. I, I know, I think I, I said to Dan that would review the multifamily.
The only reason I know is because I take notes on them and I attach this to the minutes.
Right.
Yeah.
So I have notes on Jeff's letter, but not on the waivers.
Yeah.
Did Jeff, did Jeff comment on the waivers?
Uh, not the most recent ones, no.
I don't, I don't know if he's commented on any of them.
I remember specifically talking about HDPE pipe and cover with Jeff.
Well, we, there was stuff in his letter, we, we went.
Oh, we did, yeah, we must have. Did a lot of that.
Yeah.
Because we, yeah, we definitely talked about the subject.
Yes, it was.
See, I've missed the last two meetings, so. But yeah, see, cause on Jeff's, on the, the ninth, we went, you went through Jeff's letter, but not the waivers.
Conditions, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I might've said we, we'll get to it next time because that last meeting went on for a while without, you know, Bill here, we did the site walk. So I think we were gonna revisit, unfortunately, these, so.
I think we should just have Jeff come in.
Yeah.
This isn't, it's not a long, it's not a long list.
Yes, it's not.
Probably a half hour max with Jeff.
Okay. Okay, so these still need, these still need to be done. So we need to go through the waivers, um, and then hopefully very quickly after that, we, we have a decision. We have, we have draft conditions and things, you know, the, you know, the, the needed, the decision, um.
So we're gonna need a continuance or?
Yeah, absolutely, um.
Cause it's December twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I remember that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's December twenty-sixth?
The hundred and eightieth day.
Oh, oh, so we have a meeting on December twenty-sixth. No.
Well, okay, so here, here, here's the deal, um, from about Thursday morning, um, next Thursday, you know, Thursday morning on through to the end of the year, I'm pretty much gone. Um, you know, if we want to meet like Wednesday of next week to try and do some of this.
I'm not here, but I could dial in remotely.
That's bad for me.
There we go.
I can do Thursday.
I actually, I can't do Wednesday.
Tuesday? You know, and we want Jeff and, you know, now we got no time for him to even prepare if he, if he's even available.
I'm fine Tuesday.
I can do Tuesday.
Have to see if Jeff is.
What date?
The twelfth.
It's Tuesday the twelfth?
Yes.
I'm available.
I'll be in North Carolina, but I'll bring my laptop and I'll just dial in.
I, um, I can't do it.
You can't? Dan's not available.
This is a hard month.
It's, yeah.
So many conflicts.
It's a really hard month.
What do we need for input, for public input at this point? We, we, we need, I guess we need Jeff's input on some of this stuff.
Sewer.
And the sewer. Did Paul give you any inclination when he thought he'd get that third party review?
It was supposed to come the last week in November or the first of December. That's what he told us. So, maybe tomorrow.
So, um, are people generally available either on the fourteenth or sometime, or maybe the twenty-first?
What's, what's the fourteenth?
I can't.
You? Huh?
Either one.
Yeah. I could do the twenty-first.
I can do the twenty-first. Fourteenth, I'm driving home from North Carolina. I could dial in though. I'll make sure you drive.
I'm fine the fourteenth or the twenty-first.
Bill and Metalli, fourteenth or the twenty-first?
Likewise.
Available on the fourteenth. We'll have to double check the twenty-first.
I'm available the fourteenth.
I can't do the fourteenth. I can do the twenty-first, but I'm not a voting member on this, so I don't know how.
Oh, you're not?
No, it's Metalli. She's out. She missed too because of the surgery.
So we're already down to five?
Yeah.
I'm out. I mean, I'm out. Cause I, I won't be able to, you know, I, I, um, after the, so we're down to four.
Well, you.
Are you out on, you can't vote on this either?
No, but I will be if, if, because, uh, after the thirteenth, I'm no longer available.
Oh, okay.
Gotcha.
So I'm out, so we're down to four.
Unless they.
I forgot that you were out.
Unless, unless they give us an extension. Into January.
I'm not, I'm not available the twenty-first, Bill.
I mean, do you guys want to go to January?
I mean, we already have a meeting on the eleventh. Be a long meeting because we have to.
That's a lot.
Well, the two, two of the forty As are modifications and one is just transferring one from the old owner to the new owner. The other one is, um, Upton Street is the flea market. They just want to open more hours. So that should be pretty quick. And then the other one is a special permit for a deck. I mean, so that, those, those three are pretty straightforward. I would say forty-five minutes, hour tops on that. And then we've got the last of the determination completeness, which would be.
If you guys are okay with the extension and, you know, it'll make for a long night. I mean, everyone's available on the, well.
On the eleventh.
The eleventh. Metalli and Bill, you're both available on the eleventh?
Yeah.
I mean, if you guys, okay.
January eleventh, right.
Oh, January eleventh.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, it'll make for a long meeting. We've got a lot. We just have to just move ahead and just keep, sorry, I hate when I, I hate when that happens when I'm listening to the meeting, sorry. Um, stay on task, stay on task and get through everything quickly. We should be able to get through it all.
And we could say Homrock and this one at seven thirty or something.
Well, I don't think we could even do that next time because they don't, you know, they're gonna.
We could put El Rock off if we had to.
Can we stop the meeting a little earlier?
I feel like we're already starting them early at seven, but we've been doing it so long now, seven's our regular time. It used, it used to be seven thirty.
It used to be seven thirty when I first started, yeah.
That's right.
I think it's hard for people to get.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's got a little bit challenging, um, I'm, yeah.
I'd screw that up.
We have a Wednesday meeting.
So, alright, so if you, if you're okay with, with going, pushing us off to eleven.
I think, if, I think if we go to the eleventh, we could probably go back and forth with Paul, go back and forth with Jeff from Graves and iron out ninety percent of.
Yeah, I, I think, I think so as well.
Month of, obviously, just as long as we CC all each other, I think we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll end up in a decent spot on the eleventh.
Yep. Yeah, so I, I, I think it's, I think it's input from Paul. It's a review of, from Graves and, and input from Graves on the waivers, but also his letter has that pile of stuff at the end that you guys say have all been addressed. So somehow that needs to get resolved as well.
So my thought now, given the extra time, we'll do a revised set of plans.
Yep.
Clean letter to Jeff, address all of those and then provide that before that meeting.
So you got a month to.
Yeah, I think we can iron that out.
With, with holidays and all that, but you, you're good with that?
Cause then we'll file a notice of intent right after the final set.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
When can you get that plan done?
Yeah, unfortunately Steve is, is out, so we're getting a little behind, but.
I mean, I would say two, two and a half weeks.
Yeah, I just want enough time for Jeff to turn it around.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to give it to Jeff.
Yeah, eleventh hour.
Give it to Jeff a few days before. I wouldn't appreciate that.
Well, actually, I mean, I, I, let's say, you know, a couple of weeks, that gets you to Christmas because you're a holiday week. And Jeff still has a week and a little bit to.
Actually, you have two weeks to go.
Then a whole other week after years, you know?
Yeah.
The reality is in Jeff's letter, his last paragraph was that things could be done on a final construction plan, so there's no heavy lifting, so to speak.
Yeah, I, I think from our point of view, right, so the last letter we have from Graves has unanswered issues, right? So it's just, we need to get to the point. So, you know, maybe it's not a full set of plans, maybe it's just whatever's necessary. I don't even look closely what these are. Whatever's necessary just to get these issues resolved.
Yep, fair enough.
Sure. Alright. Alright, so today is the, what's, what's today's date?
Today's December seventh.
Okay, so I just tried to. It's brutal missing me.
Yeah. I guess that is.
You busy girl.
Alright, so that, that, and then, um, Jeff's letter.
Keep going.
What's the date of Jeff's letter?
November seventh.
What am I gonna do? Written extension?
Yeah. Alright, I think I'm caught up. Alright, so, um, with that in mind then, I'll entertain a motion, uh, any, no input, no cut, no, uh, public?
No, no.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, our drop dead dates on the twenty-sixth, so I think we'd have to give you a formal extension, right?
Right.
Yeah, so I'll get that letter. I'll get that letter out to you. Um, I wasn't gonna come in tomorrow, but I, maybe I will come in and get that letter over to you tomorrow. First thing in the morning, unless I do it tonight, I'm just taking care of it and tonight get it over to you.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was kind of implied when I was saying we go to the eleventh.
Gotcha. Yeah, I didn't know if you had to make a motion for this.
No, I just need to send you that letter. So I'll get it over to you tonight.
Okay. Alright, um, so no, alright, so there's no, uh, what's, what's in chat? Is that anything?
That was, no, that was Metalli.
Metalli, there's no public needs saving, um, so I didn't.
He sneezed. He just muted himself. I just muted him. Oh, you did?
I entertain a motion to continue case number, um, eight ninety-eight to January eleventh at, let's say, seven thirty.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, so a motion made and seconded, uh, on a roll call vote, uh, we'll start with the folks on the phone. Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas?
Yes.
I guess if you're out then.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Uh, vice chairman votes yes. Alright, so thank you for the extra time. We'll see you on January eleventh and hopefully we'll have everything wrapped up at that point.
Happy holidays.
Same to you.
Happy holidays.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
I will get that to you as quick as possible.
Yeah. But I guess it's just before the drop dead date.
Yeah, no, I'll get it out to you if not, if not, um, tonight or tomorrow, Monday.
You, you've got the meeting.
Monday's fine. Don't come in this year.
It's while I can come in to do that to go to the Cape and do leaves, you know, it's my poison.
Do you want these extra?
No, those are your copies I have.
Everybody got one of these?
Alright.
You, you've got a copy to stamp and.
Oh, of that?
Yeah.
That's the drone image?
No, I did not get this. No, I will take this and stamp it in. Did you get one of these?
No, but you'll upload.
He can, he can have mine.
We have several.
She's got a whole pile.
Well, I, I did the site walk, so we got them.
Actually, did they send us that electronically?
No, but I have to stamp it in and scan it anyway.
Yeah, it's a massive file. I tried to send it, but it's like two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, no, it's easier if I scan it in, um, here you go.
Is that one of those, uh, you take two hundred drone images and they stitch them together? Right. Through LiDAR, it's, yeah, it's, it's great. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, Clay.
Night.
Clay, sorry. I remember his name because my nephew's name is Clay William.
Oh, is that his, is his last name?
Yeah.
Clay William, wow.
Alright, so the only thing left on the agenda is the minutes.
Yep, if we want to do, it's your call.
Yeah, let's just.
Knock it out.
Bye, Dan.
Alright, Dan, thank you.
Same to you.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Alright, so just start in order, so October twelfth.
Oh, God, the shit by me.
Mm-hmm.
Katrina, could I ask you to share the minutes as we're going through them too, please? That'd be really helpful.
Sure.
I, you know, so where we say combined meaning of planning board and zoning board of appeals for discussion of pros, I, I think, we should probably just make it clear that that was a public hearing. It was the planning board's public hearing. But, um, so maybe combined meaning with planning board and zoning. I don't know, maybe I'm just getting too, too concerned here.
No, it was a public hearing.
Yeah, maybe at the end of it, just, um, just add during planning board public hearing. I just, you know, it's, it wasn't just like we got together, talked about it, it was a public hearing, so I just wanted to get that language in there somewhere. And maybe because we're saying combined meaning with planning board, maybe say, um, before we get to the part ZBA opens public hearing, maybe just say, uh, planning board.
How about do I do a combined plup, no, because, but it was a combined public meeting.
Well, I know, I, I think if you just add during planning board public hearing at the end, it'd be fine.
Okay.
And then maybe just add a line before the line that says ZBA opens public hearing for case eight ninety-two, just maybe say, planning board, uh, concluded their meeting.
Okay.
Oh, that makes sense.
Adjourned, planning board adjourned their meeting.
Okay.
Then just one small change on the comments from FIRE under eight ninety-two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on walkways and chair proposed by the applicant, can you change the patient to, I don't know what other word, but I, every time I read that, I kept seeing paint.
Oh.
Paint removed.
Okay.
Um, what else do you call?
Um, how about the person that lives there? What would you call them? A resident? Occupant resident. Resident, yeah.
Emergency resident removed?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments on October twelfth? Entertained motion to accept the minutes for the October twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting?
As amended, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, do a roll call vote. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. The October twenty-fifth minutes.
Wait a minute, I've got two of them.
Yeah, we do. Okay, yeah, so the second set of October fifth are no. Yeah, we do. Okay, yeah, so the second set of October fifth or November ninth, I messed up and didn't change the upper date, because if you look at them, they're two separate sets of minutes. So that was on me, because I always just take the last minutes and.
All right, so which one's which?
So, uh, the October twenty-fifth is the one that say ZB opens public hearing for case eight ninety-two continuation.
And the other one's November ninth?
And then, yeah, the other one's November ninth is one sixteen Upton Street. And I have fixed them, but the copy I sa, I gave to you, I had sent out before I caught that. I did send new copies out today. Yeah, I did send some out today, so, sorry, guys. It's been a crazy week.
Oh, so I'll just get rid of that one.
Didn't Scott Nowitzki make a poll comment?
He did. I thought he.
Did I not get Scott in there? Good memory. He did, because he was.
But was his comment along the lines of?
I agree with everybody else.
Yeah, pretty much.
It's not.
Yeah, I think it was something like that.
Yeah, actually.
I mean, I can add him in.
I just add him. He was here at every, or many meetings.
Sorry, Metalli.
Hey, did we? Minutes for October twenty-fifth include review of the minutes for October twelfth? Did we already do those?
No. Because I don't have a final in here. I must have just had that in from something else, so I'll delete that. No, you didn't, we didn't do minutes. Because I would have had a final in here.
So do we have any changes to what was submitted here?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
A move we accepted, meeting minutes of October twenty-fifth to twenty twenty-three as amended.
Second.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yelmanns?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. October twenty-fifth minutes are accepted. Uh, Thursday, November ninth.
Isn't this the one that I was available at the very end, yeah, nine o' three?
Yeah, you're in there.
So should I, should I be as members present?
Well, you were absent. You were absent when the meeting was called to order, and then you came in.
Yeah.
So actually, I'm listed as members present, William McCusker members absent.
Oh, because you were, okay.
Yeah, you need to take me out of members present.
Okay, sorry.
And were you not, oh, yeah, both me and Bill.
Yep, all right.
Yeah.
Like I said, I cut and paste.
Cut and paste, yeah.
Makes a little bit easier, but I always forget sometimes.
I have a question. So where it says applicant agrees to run electricity in at lamp post light for the homeowner, this is Upton Street. Does that get added as a condition?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have draft conditions yet, right?
No. No.
Not yet.
I don't have anything else to add here. So I make a motion that we, um, accept the meeting minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty-three as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yelmanns?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. November nineteenth minutes are approved, um, November thirtieth. It should say hybrid rules of order.
Oh. Mm-hmm.
Well, I got.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yelmanns?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, November thirtieth minutes are accepted or approved. That's it, done. So entertain a motion to adjourn?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Hold on.
Hold on, we're not done yet.
So moved. It's somebody.
Motion made and seconded, uh, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Yelmanns?
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas?
Yes, and Merry Christmas, too.
Chairman votes yes.
And Merry Christmas to.
Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays, guys.